Give them a real mower for that, for the parks and the baseball, a real.
So we put on to that?
So, Councilman, I said at the beginning that all the parks-
Not all the other parts that need to be a better cut than what we're doing.
Yes, and so what we have is you have, I think the last one we bought was a John Deere, is that right?
Yes, we have two John Deeres.
So then we're gonna be based on whatever we have, when we, I'm about to go out to bid on the landscape for the park down there, the beautiful park that we have behind here. And so they're gonna make recommendations of what we need to do to maintain it. But what he's doing is just maintaining and cutting the grass and all the other different parks. But there are some park equipment that we need to replace, some slides that are pretty antiquated, we need to do some safety things, and so those are the things we're hoping that we can focus on next year to be able to do that. It's kinda like a risk management assessment that you talked about at the pool, we're gonna do this and this is gonna be the new bible that we're gonna be able to focus on as one of the goals.
But Mr. Nissel, I'm saying that we needed maybe one or two more.
I wondered about more real lawn mowers, you know, riders, as I see one of the crews taking a zero turn, driving down the 181, cutting the grass down there. I see him going back and forth, cutting grass with the small zero turn lawn mowers. And when they're using them out there, how does he operate his parks? Or do we got other ones that are mower besides the parks? Does the street crew have a zero turn?
Uh, yes, East Department has their own lawn mowers, they don't really share them.
So that's streets?
So Maire has, uh, they have Bad Boys, and the sewer has Bad Boys, so they can have them in place, and, um, but Streets does no cutting. We took all the cutting away from Streets. And so he has to have his equipment move it left and right and where he needs to go. And so when they need to cut the wells, they have their own, uh, when the sewer plant needs to cut theirs, they have their own. Uh, they're, they're so much smaller, I think they're called Bad Boys, is that right?
But we need a budget every year, say, what do they run, $12,000, $10,000?
At least, yes, sir.
Okay, so we could say like every third year, we get a new one, you know, if we do $4,000 a year, budget $4,000 a year for that way, every year we could get a new one.
If they need it, if they need it. Do you need any lawn mowers?
It would, it would help, it wouldn't hurt, put it that way, it wouldn't hurt.
Well, we don't have the money to buy this year.
We don't have any money to buy this year.
But I was just wondering about buying the attachment for the tractor that you could pick up for $6,000, that they can cut, you know, 72 inches and 120 instead of 48.
And, um, the last thing we have on the agenda is service, and Eli's here and he can speak to the equipment. He has put a, a scale, a layout in here of what they are and what condition they are, and I don't know if he put any hours in.
We're talking about an additional 72 there.
We will, we will keep that in mind, but-
Add on the tractor instead of putting zero turns on the highway.
Yes, and we can keep that in mind for our next budget, but there's no room in this budget to add anything additional.
Okay, and one of the, can I speak, one of the reasons not to put the zero turns on the highway because there's always bottles, metal, tires, I mean, those are good for wherever you have a cane, but on the side of the highway?
Well, I think-
They'll destroy-
They actually, um-
Rocks and everything.
The tractor was down, and the shredder was down.
Yes, exactly.
They were down, and so usually the shredder does the highway, but it was down, and we couldn't let it just keep growing, and Eli was able to get it back online.
Well, I just know if you have a 42-inch lawnmower and it takes one man 10 hours to make three strips, you know, you can get a 120-inch lawnmower, it takes one man to do it for three hours, so you pick up a lot of time and labor.
We don't have the money right now.
I understand that, but when we're looking at labor, we can cut labor costs down too. That's what I'm looking at, eliminate.
Okay, and I've got another question. Uh, we need to get somebody certified, like again, to do the spraying of the weeds, you know, that'll cut your time in half, you know, without having to weedy everything, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, we've had that discussion, and we'll continue to have that discussion to sign some people up so that they become certified to put down the pesticide and things that are friendly to the community, for the community, yeah, because you have to remember our parks are used by children as well as animals, and we have to be careful of what we do, we wanna make sure we have certified, but we definitely will do that.
Well, I'm, I'm going to harp on the cemetery.
Yes, so if we're done with the parks, we can move on to the cemetery?
And the cemetery, for as long as I have, I can remember, we've been promised the streets, and we've been talking about the streets. And, um, because my husband and I spend a lot of time out there, uh, we get, we hear a lot of complaints about the potholes on a day-to-day basis, just trying to get to their loved ones in the cemetery. So what are the plans and to, to fix those streets, or at least patch them?
Yes, uh, we're going to, actually I've spoken to Renee, our, our street supervisor, and, um, that is one of the things we're gonna focus on. If you look at one of the goals and objectives is to improve the cemetery road. Now, we are running into some issues because, um, I don't know if you realize it, and you probably go more than most people, Mayor, there used to be a Republic garbage dumpster right where you walked in. We eliminated that, mainly because we were having people dump things there that shouldn't be in there, but the truck couldn't get all the way in there, and so that's where I ended it. But it was literally laying on a partial of a gentleman's, uh, father's, uh, remains, and so we, we had that removed. And so that's one of the problems that we have, is that it's not a wide road. Now, Councilman Ortiz, when you were on the council before, he asked why we couldn't use that secondary exit, Texas Doc closed that exit some time ago and won't allow us to open that secondary gate off of 181. And so there is difficulty in getting in there, um, and to do that, but that is one of the focuses we're gonna do, because just to get our machines in there, those roads are so narrow, it is not a two-way, and so people have to park all the time on the sides, but that is one of the focuses we wanna do. Uh, we did talk to our previous attorney, not a lovely attorney that we have now. It was determined that we could use, uh, street maintenance tax because technically that is a street. And so that was one of the problems we were having before, Mayor, was we didn't have the funding. But according to Mr. Hug, he said that that was a street. It was existing at the time that we did the tax, and so in, in his legal opinion, we could use street maintenance tax, which we're hoping that we can get going this time, okay? Uh, one of the things that we do wanna go, and I talked about it in one of my city manager's report, is to transfer cemetery number one, Plum Street, uh, to the Greater Bethel Baptist, uh, Missionary Baptist Church. Uh, I've spoken to the minister, Reverend Taylor, several times. Uh, we've maintained it, we've cut it down, uh, we fenced it in, it looks 110% better than what it did before, and, uh, they're willing to take on that, which means that it will no longer be a city cemetery, it will be a, a private cemetery, which they have to maintain. Now, historically, we have been charged for those plots, and those plots are not planted in, and we don't sell them, and, but it's active cemetery, and so, um, if the city is to maintain it, uh, and maintain ownership of it, then we'll have to treat that cemetery like we treat the one on Pluma Drive, which means we need to start charging, uh, for that and plotting it. And so I just think it'd be cleaner for us to transfer to the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church. Uh, they're meeting on it themselves to say yes, and then I'll be bringing that forward. So then that means we would just have that one cemetery we need to focus on. Now, the sign is up, we talked about the sign, the sign is up, but also help us maintain is, um, have anywhere we don't have all those impediments that we have to stop people from cutting and moving around and things such as that, uh, to help to be able to do that. Uh, it is just a sign, um, we haven't removed anything, I promise you. Uh, we're probably gonna start doing that till we, after, um, excuse me, Peanut Festival, then we'll start putting things in newspaper to advertise, let people know that we'll start removing them, we'll have to remove them and maintain them, but we wanna notify people and let them know. Uh, we, we do, we do have a, um, we had an issue, as you all remember, about, um, double selling some of those plots, and so, uh, we have turned on the cemetery encode, and so they will be putting it into the system. At one point in time, we thought we could record them, uh, but Eva's office saying she's not recording cemetery plots, so we need to be able to update and spend some time once we relocate back in City Hall to get those, so we won't have that double selling of the lots. Again, that was a little painful for myself. So, uh, we will reiterate that again when we talk to Streets on how important this for council, as one of the goals and objectives for the, uh, Street Department, to make improvements and take care of those potholes on the street. Is that okay?
Yes.
Now, as Connie likes to point out, uh, the cemetery fund, since that's the one you wanna focus on, is not doing very badly. Uh, I don't know if that's a good thing or not, but, um, is the cemetery fund's doing, uh, not bad, and so, you said that joke, I mean, uh, and so, uh, one of the things we wanna make sure that we're charging appropriately, so we'll be charging some things, uh, fencing and, uh, tools, because, you know, and, um, actually, Connie, can you tell me what page of the cemetery fund's on?
Yes, it starts with, on page 27, the revenues, and page 28 expenditures.
So let's look at 28, 'cause we may be able to get us a lawnmower. One of the things that I've come across is they're telling me that we need to be able to, uh, you can cross-contaminate yards by using the same lawnmower in different places, and so, uh, Connie, can you see, do you think we can afford a lawnmower on the cemetery fund?
Yes, what I did hear is that because we don't have any projects in, um, other than what we collect in revenue, we more or less estimate to come to, uh, collect about $10,000, and as you can see, on prior years, we have collected even more. So I'm always conservative, I never, um, budget for anything higher than what I think that for sure we're gonna get. So there's money on reserves where we can use for a lawnmower.
I have a question.
There's money on what?
Yes, sir.
Reserve.
David?
Yes, sir.
Do we really need that lawnmower?
Can you really, really, you know, we don't have the manpower to be honest with-
If we don't need something from now on?
The thing is that we haven't put in a lot, a lot of money or expense a lot of money out of these funds, so this fund is very decent, and as you can see, even, uh, budgeting conservative, we were able to balance it, to spend only the $10,000 that I think we're gonna collect, uh, unless we have a major project like doing a full street or, or doing a, like the big sign or something off fence, and then I'll go ahead and transfer money from the reserves to have it available for us to spend.
Well, and I would like to bring up to the council, and I, I haven't gone in with, with this, but a lot of the headstones, especially in the section, uh, the first section on, uh, Third Street, are sinking or falling, and so I don't know what the policy is. Um, I had talked to some of the other, um, the Historical Society about if there's anything that we as the city cemetery can do to fix those, or is that's up to the families? So there might be some expenses later on that we could use, use in that cemetery other than a lawnmower right now, but that's just an if.
It's usually the, the family members that, that buy the stones and do the, I mean, that's, that's how we do it all?
Yes, typically, um, it's the family, because we don't have, uh, any perpetual care, it's usually the family that takes care of anything, with placing the headstone, the cost of the headstone, that's usually the family.
Yeah, because some people don't even have headstones, because they can't afford it.
Well, and, but there's always expenses in there, um, uh, bees, ants, snakes-
Snakes.
-shrooms.
I, I can anticipate that after we start removing items, those curves and those kind of things, uh, we run across some things that we probably will need to use, um, some issues in reference to that, and so, uh, not necessarily in this fiscal year, 'cause we have this year to get people notice to move things out, uh, but next fiscal year I can see some, but that, that fund has a reserve, but if nothing else, we can use a policy of, we would, whatever revenue we make, that we could invest that back into, uh, the cemetery. Does that sound fair, Connie?
Yes.
Okay, one of the things, uh, Mr. Ortiz asked, you know, we need a lawnmower, but how about, how about that attachment for the shredder that you were talking about, that's only $6,000? What do you need, and, uh, do you need a-
It'd have to get a bit, I'm not sure.
No, I'm just saying, you know, roughly.
We could look into it, I don't see why not.
No, but you could really utilize that-
Oh, yeah.
Better than you can zero turn on your-
If it's, um, if it's for the cemetery, yes, but I don't see using a shredder in a cemetery.
Yes, you can't use it in the cemetery, it's too, it's too high. That's why we have the smaller mowers, you need to spread between the headstones.
And we really need to get the attorney to look and see if we can lower headstones, straight and trimmer, repair and move headstones, because that is a private property on city property stuff, and it's very emotional for people.
There's a deed that's issued to each one, and technically the city doesn't own that property anymore, uh, or, or, it's to maintain the grounds, and so, uh, in, in my time of being here, and I haven't been here that long, uh, we've only moved a headstone at our cost, uh, because it was a, a mix-up or a miscommunication in reference to headstone, but typically we don't touch those.
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna hurt anybody's feelings.
Okay. And that's the reason why we need to be conservative, because those malls are very expensive.
Okay. Okay, any other, I'm sorry, any other questions or comments on the cemetery? The head, the headstones. I had spoken to somebody before Henrietta about fixing some of those tall ones that are broken and fallen down. You're incurring a big, big cost. Okay, yes. It's incurring a big, big cost to clean them, or to get them to, get them repaired, and doing the manpower to do the research to try and find family- Right. Well, and then it goes back to the fact that, that if we don't do that, there'll, there'll be some other expenditures in that department, I mean, in that, in the cemetery.
Yes, and then there's the older section that-
That's what we're talking about, the older section.
The old, I mean, but it's, it's a section that we haven't actually plotted yet-
Correct.
-that we need to think about selling, and-
Across from Section 8, oh, on that side, toward the apartments?
We haven't plotted, and since we're talking about-
We have to plot them out.
Yes, we have to plot them out. The, the last thing is, we talked to County for some time, uh, I know Councilman Ortiz, we did make an ordinance in reference to, of veterans, but we've had a couple of times where we've had people who have a connection to Florisville but could not afford to bury them, and so, um, County, um, at one time we talked about working with County in reference to having some lots available, uh, if, if the person is cremated in reference to, uh, doing that, and so that's something that we may want to look at in the future to allow for those who are injured that are, have a connection to the city of Florisville, to allow them to, uh, to have their remains here.
Okay, any other questions on the cemeteries or the parks for, for David? That's, uh, David Martinez?
Yes, David Martinez, and, um, we've been doing, uh, having a little problem just for note, uh, at our skate park, um, with some homeless people moving into the bathroom, uh, and so, uh, we are locking the, um, locking them up at night when they get off, uh, and so that we can address that issue. Uh, the police have been watching and have made some arrests, but it's a, it's an issue that we have, uh, with some homeless, we've actually had some tagging as well, and so, uh, we're looking at getting some graffiti paint, uh, the, the problem with graffiti paint is like four times higher than what, uh, normal paint is. The last, they were, they have just been painting, and what did they put on there the last time you painted it out there?
Oh, that time we were there, they said, why, why repaint it?
They said, why bother?
Why bother?
So they, we're painting and they keep coming back, so but, uh-
Can we put some type of camera?
Uh, we, we, uh, the, we, we have a camera, we're having some internet issues, uh, but we're having some issues, so we're just locking the bathrooms. So if somebody complains to you at this point, it, it, we just have to lock those bathrooms, because between the homeless guy moving in and, literally, he left his shampoo and toothbrush-
We're not talking about the homeless guy, that's usually the continuation of one person doing the same graffiti.
The tagging and all that kinda stuff, uh, it's four times as much, uh, per can for the graffiti, so we're just gonna paint over with the paint that we have and just lock the bathrooms until-
Don't we have a camera?
We do have a camera, but, um, it's, the police said they can't monitor the camera, uh, and so we're trying to work on some things with the, with the chief. They've been watching it more, but in the engine we're just locking the cameras, locking it up.
Camera is outside of the bathroom, right?
The camera has to be outside of the bathroom.
Right, okay, 'cause when they go and tag the inside-
And it's a-
Are the taggings going on inside?
All the taggings going on inside.
So it's, it's, the privacy, uh, can't do that.
Yeah, so, so it's a, but I just wanna say, we're handling the bathrooms, we're cleaning the bathrooms, we're just locking them, uh, at night, so during the day they're open, but at night we have to, because we can't monitor them, but we can't keep having it done. We haven't, they haven't broken the toilets yet, but we're just having that problem. Thank you, David, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, if we could move to Streets next, Renee's here from our Streets Department.
And by the way, the park is a non-generative, uh, non-revenue generating park.
Yes, but we do have some lovely parks. Okay, so our Streets Department, Renee, you've been with us how long?
I've been with the city for 16 months.
16 months, okay. And so, uh, in the Streets Department, uh, one of the things that, uh, the former council was really, really adamant about is bringing, uh, our Streets, uh, repair and maintenance back into staff, and so we've loaded up on staff, we've added some additional staff members, and so, uh, if our goal is an objective, uh, Renee, would you like to go over which Streets we wanna repair? Because I think Councilman Kintu had a question. Renee?
Yes?
Yes, on Railroad, Renee, Railroad Street, y'all were just talking about the one over there by the high school?
By the high school, correct.
Can y'all include Railroad down here, uh, next to Martha's?
Uh, we can, but, uh, they weren't talking about the ones that were really, really bad, and, uh, Railroad, F Street, and Plum Street are the worst ones off.
But that little road right here next to Martha's, you don't think that's just that little road?
Well, that one already has a chip seal on it, I mean, that was one of the roads, that Selina, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a warranty on that?
I'm sorry?
Was there a warranty on that, since you contracted that out? The one by Martha's, going down here, that little narrow one?
There was a warranty that, with Selina's Streets.
And there's a warranty on that?
Was there, was that Street contract, or from the, uh, I believe it came in?
Yes, that was a one-year.
One-year only?
Yes.
It was passed.
I was, thank you.
That, that street got turned into a drainage, didn't it?
Yes, it did.
You had good drainage on one side, then they filled it in, built houses there, now the water goes straight down the street.
That's right.
Yeah, when they built that-
Actually, I have it marked out right there, when you're talking about Martha's, to do that intersection right there, because I, I seen it and it's, it's really bad. If y'all go by there, you can see where we marked it, and it's gonna get ready to be cut out. I went around town with the guys, and, uh, we have probably about 16 large sections of roads that we gotta, that we cut out, and we're gonna start here tomorrow, probably with F, the corner of F and Fourth, uh, get it prepped. We stayed behind because we had, uh, our 18-wheeler was down, the one that brings the material in, and, uh, we, Eli fixed it, so we hauled in all the material that we needed, so we're ready to start. We already started on patching, and, uh, like I said, we have 16 large patches that we went and sold out and get ready to start repairing. So that's where we're at right now.
And then on Plum Street, y'all were talking just about the one over there where, um, Boy Salas lives?
The whole, correct, from 181 to Fourth Street.
To Fourth?
Fourth.
Okay.
The whole road is bad.
Yeah, 'cause the other one, it's okay, I mean, to me it seems like it's-
Councilman Jimenez?
Yep. Over there by the high school, have we met with the high school and see what, how much money that they wanna pay?
I, I have spoken to, uh, Mr. Atkins, Bill Atkins, which is Superintendent of Finance, and they have no interest to assist us at all with that street.
But it was because of the field that they put there?
Well, maybe we need to talk to all the school board instead of just one person, because, uh, that's-
Well, you, as you know, that's astroturf, and it, it, the water just comes off and chills, and we did in our, uh, street, we did the-
Because that's gonna have to take turf in it.
So these, the, the street that goes around on A Street, coming around that way, we worked on that.
Al, come to that street, Charlie.
Charlie.
I said, around.
Charlie, it's a problem.
We went around, and so we did that on our, on our, the street, but, uh, there's some issues, so if you'd like, we can, um, see if we can get on the school board agenda, but they, but they meet the same night we do, don't they?
Um, yes, 'cause I thought-
They meet the same-
His next meeting is August 13th, that's when their next meeting is.
I can see if we can get on their agenda, but when I spoke to him, as well as Superintendent, they had no interest to, uh, assist us with the street.
I know when Eric Kelly was there, when we did, uh, the street by churches, we did the elementary, they helped, they helped out with the sidewalks and everything.
Uh, yes, well, they're, they're having some, I know schools, one of the biggest taxes that they're doing, they're having some issues with their taxes as well, I know they have, uh, something to come up on the ballot, I believe, in August, uh, so, but I will, I will ask.
But we're all in the same crunch, but, you know, that street really needs to be worked on.
So Railroad, would, in, in your estimate time, how long would that take?
Depending what they actually want, just the road, or they want the easement, because there's more concrete, more asphalt than just the road itself. I mean, the, the drainage is gonna be the, the biggest problem for, for that road, because there's a lot of water coming off of those football field, and, uh, for me, doing, working in this business for a good while, I know that that's way too much water going to 181, so it needs to be going somewhere else. I had seen it right behind, what is it, that one place?
Behind Sonic.
Behind Sonic and that other, I think Texas Workforce, there's a drain there, and I, I walked it, and I seen that the water is diverted in between that property, that empty property there, and Mayor's house, I believe, and it, that's where it's going, but I really don't, I mean, that's, that's a big project there, that's, so I mean-
Councilman Nissen, you had a question?
Yeah, can you explain the difference on 19, the Street Department expense versus Page 32, the tax Street Department? Is one to build streets and the other to maintain streets, or what is it?
Okay, the department, the 301, uh, 505, uh, there's on Page 19.
Uh-huh.
That, the department belongs to General Fund, and is, is the, the one that existed all the time. The Fund 415, that's a sales tax, the, the state assigned for street maintenance only.
Okay, but we're talking about on 301, maintenance right now.
Correct.
So does that money go from?
So the street maintenance tax money is money that we can use to repair streets that were in existence at the time of the last election.
Like the railroad street that he's talking about?
Just like Railroad F, um, yes.
So that one also, instead of, do you put that 350 basically into this, or is it 350 plus 510 out of, so you got 860,000 coming out, 350's taxed, and 510 comes out of General Fund, or is only 160 come out of General Fund?
No, you only spend what we budget in General Fund, to that department.
110,000.
To that department. Now, that Fund 415 is more restricted.
Well, we're talking about, if we're talking about repairing Railroad Street, we shouldn't be talking about it out of 301, then we should be talking about it out of-
No, you can, you can also do it on Fund 35, 415, and we did a project, when we did the engineer for some of the roads that we ended up doing three, three roads.
Yes, that was when we did, uh, we did the street maintenance program.
Yeah, we did, yes.
That's what we paid for out of the, of the funds, but, but what I think what you're saying is that, yes, the materials and things such as that, that he's gonna use to fix that, comes out of the street maintenance fund. The material that we're gonna use to do, uh, the cemetery road-
Renee?
-is gonna come out of, of that, of that, the material, but we have to pay for staff and those kind of equip, those kind of things, and that comes out of the Streets Department. We also use-
Okay, so that's why the maintenance, all the, the material and stuff is cheap, that really comes out of the 410, 430. Okay, so we have 860,000 that we use on streets per year.
Yes, and the sales tax has been pretty consistent, I think, um, Connie said the last time in my report, somewhere around there, we're above about 6%, so we're doing pretty good, so he's ready to get started. We've even have purchased, back in the day, uh, when we first started doing it in-house, some equipment to get them going, uh, so the Streets Department, uh, has been challenged to take care of, uh, the streets itself, potholes, uh, addressing work orders, but also signage, which is not, I can't use, um, the tax money for signage, but some of our street signs are faded, you can't see them, some of our year signs are just bleached away because of the sun, and so we're having to replace some of those. For example, when you all approved that stop sign, that came out of that fund, that's the Street Department fund, not the, the street maintenance fund.
The tax, and I wanna, uh, go ahead and bring first that, on Page 32, if you'll turn to that, that page, that's Fund 415.
32.
Yes, that's fund four fifteen, and every year I budget two hundred thousand dollars for street repair projects, so that's in case council wants to go ahead and do a project of two or three streets that are gonna be done in-house, and then that's, that money to use for that.
Yes, and so one of the things that I've been talking about, we're talking about